Call to order this meeting, East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, March 15th, 2016. If anybody here hasn't signed the sign-in sheet, that would be great if you could do that. Is there anyone here to speak to anything that is not on the agenda tonight? All right. First order of business is our meeting minutes for our February 16th, 2016 meeting. Do you folks all have a chance to look at the minutes?
Yep.
Any errors or omissions?
I didn't see any.
I didn't see any.
To approve the February 16th planning board minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right. We have a couple A and Rs on the agenda. First up, Ronald and Sheila. Stop there, because I can't pronounce it any further. Come on up. All right. All right. You're coming back here, right?
Yep.
And you went to the zoning board?
Yeah.
They approved the access from somewhere.
Right, okay, so...
We submitted it.
Just for the record, they were back here earlier. They didn't meet the specific frontage requirements, and they went and got a variance from the ZBA.
Right.
Based on the wetlands and their access across this easement that's marked on the plan, which satisfies their frontage requirements.
The frontages.
Right. But the access and then the frontage, yeah.
For me, that was the only issue I'd be ready to endorse.
Anything else from the planning department?
No, the easement's from 1916, so it's a longstanding easement.
Yeah.
And DPW did go out there and looked at the access, and they didn't see any issues with access through that easement area. And just so the applicants know, I did talk with Captain Heneman from the Fire Department in terms of just making sure that your street address and public safety, and said that that's all clear, so make sure that you have good conversations with them. They don't go to Everett Street and realize they can't get there, so...
All right.
I motion to endorse the approval not required for Ronald and Sheila Rasuzatek.
Second.
On 113rd Avenue, East Hampton.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Been here for a day. You're in front of me. Sit back, and you'll hear what I have to say, which won't be much.
Any copies I do?
Three.
Been gone so long, you didn't remember. Which one do I sneak a blank check on if they want?
All right.
We have applicants, one by law and one off.
There you go, folks. All right. Thanks a lot, folks. Good luck.
It's been a long process for you, I'm glad it's finally coming.
All right. Next on the agenda, an A and R for Rambo Financial Revocable Trust, 6 Loudville Road. Someone here for that?
Excuse me?
More double duty.
Yes, right.
As a busy guy.
Yeah.
We need a name.
It's Mark Reed.
Record, Mark Reed preparing surveys.
So this is a plan showing a two-acre parcel of land at the intersection of Palmer Middle Road, West Street, and Glendale, and Loudville. Four different names of streets. So that the existing dwelling, which is known as 6 Loudville Road, has ample frontage and area to satisfy the zoning. We're cutting out a two-acre parcel, requires 35,000 square feet. They're cutting out two acres. And only 125 feet of frontage, and there's more than enough frontage.
Can you just help me clarify what the lot is here?
Sure. So the lot comes down...
That's the proposed lot, but the...
It's inside tiers, what we're talking about. Got it, okay.
Right. The full lot, right now, goes all the way back?
Full lot is...
Okay.
Very large parcel. Goes all the way down to the town line.
Okay.
At the bridge between East Hampton and Southampton, and quite a distance up Loudville Road.
Looks like it's got the frontage to me.
Any issues, comments from the planning department?
Pretty straightforward.
Yep, you go ahead.
I motion to endorse the Rambo Financial Revocable Trust, 6 Loudville Road.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, we'll let Harry go, I'll second him.
Chairman's grant, this continues.
We'll get right along. Continued special permit hearing for 412 Main Street, Yankee Hill Machine.
Mark Reed, survey. Chris and Kevin Vaner here tonight, along with attorney Tom Randall. And I'd like to try to bring this closer. This is a continuation of a meeting that we had a month ago. And, so you want to see it? We had a peer review, or the city had a peer review by Duset Associates, and we have revised, updated the plans to reflect questions that they had, comments they had, as well as the board had at our last meeting, and I'd just like to go through with. As a re-pressure to the project in itself, Yankee Hill Machine is proposing to relocate their business from Florence to 412 Main Street, in what was known as, or previously used, by Argotec on the southerly side of Main Street, almost into Southampton, near the intersection of Coleman Road. The parcel itself is divided by the rail trail, and has another larger parcel on the opposite side of the rail trail, which is really an undeveloped and wooded section with plenty of wetlands that doesn't have anything on it. So that, this is the developed area. As you can see, a good portion of this is also wetland and undeveloped. So, in doing the revisions, we revised the site plan and provided a second plan to the planning board, addressing comments from Duset Associates. One was to show on Sheet 2, spot grades for ADA compliant handicap access to the building. So we prepared Sheet 2, entitled ADA Compliant Plan. And on that sheet, we're providing five new handicap parking spaces located here. The pavement grades that are existing meet all the standards for slope. There's no, as we said at the last meeting, no changes to the pavement. There's an existing sidewalk that comes up and into the front door, Main Street being up here. It also is in compliance with ADA, so we've added that to the plan. Their second comment was that we would add snow storage areas, and they'd be located outside the 100-foot buffer zone. So on the site plan and on Sheet 2, we're showing two large snow areas, stockpile areas. As you come in the driveway, there's a large parking field in here, so there's a large grass area right in here. We don't need to cut any trees, it's already a natural. So there'll be a snow area, storage area here. And then there's another snow storage area and a grass area in the back of the property to take care of the rear or the truck accesses to the site in itself. Comment three was relative to dumpsters and recycling containers. Where would they be located? And we've added them to the plan. The existing loading docks and dumpsters previously were at the rear of the building. There's a concrete pad that will be reused, and so that the dumpster pads and recycling bins and so forth will be located at the rear of the building, out of sight from anyone in the area. The other question that they had was access for tractor-trailer trucks. And we did a study based on the Mass DOT standards when we laid out the parking, to ensure that the tractor-trailer truck can enter the site safely, go down through the employee parking lot, come around the back of the building, and back into two loading docks that they'll be utilizing in the rear of the building, so that there is ample space for them to do that, and then pull out and go back out onto Main Street for a tractor-trailer truck. The other question was site lighting, we had a discussion about last meeting. So we took a look at the building, and we found that there are existing, what is known as wall pack or wall-mounted lights, and we've shown them on a plan, as well as three spotlights on this side of the building, which is the easterly side of the building, that shine over the parking lot. There's wall-mounted lights in the rear, and two additional spotlights in the back to light it up. Those will be upgraded to LED, and they're fully adjustable, so that the heads can be moved, so that not to shine light on the, only a butter that's on there, which is the veterinarian that's budding the property. And then this is all large wooded section before it gets to Lumico Lane for that. We've also attached to the letter that you have, an operations and maintenance of storm-water system plan, known as an O and M plan. And this details how the existing drainage system will be maintained after they get done remodeling and have moved in there. For instance, catch basins, cleaning, inspecting them, and it lays out how those functions will be done, and a timeframe for doing that. Catch basins and manholes will be inspected twice a year. Catch basins and manholes shall be cleaned out once a year. And if there's a large deposit of sand anywhere in between times, they would clean them and have them cleaned professionally. Sweeping would be twice a year. Typically, you have spring cleanup, and then also after the leaves drop, you also kind of clean up the parking lot prior to the winter months coming. So that's part of the record. Along with that is an inspection form and log. Log, every time an inspection is done on the site, they would fill in inspection and say everything's okay, or this needs to be repaired or so and so, to keep a log so that it's on file and can be given to somebody if requested. And final question, and we talked about this at the last meeting, was the issue of floor drains being within the existing building and potentially connected to the drainage system, which then goes out and discharges to the wetland at the rear of the site. It's reported by the seller that all the floor drains have been disconnected. We did a site inspection last week out there and found that it appears that it is true that they have been, but until they get in there and really start remodeling the inside of the building, inspecting everything, the very large empty warehouse right now, we don't know for sure. And right now, they really can't do that type of inspection until they, without heavy equipment or equipment, to be able to look through some of the floor drains that, or not floor drains, slots, channels within the building that are still there, and to make sure that there's no pipe connection outside. So what we're requesting is that prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, we, or Ty and Bond, who is their consultant that deals with the interior portion and aspects of the project, do a certification to the town or the city, certifying that, yes, in fact, there are no connections in any way from the building connecting into the drainage system and potentially pollution getting into those resource areas. So those seven items, we've addressed, revised plans, and I think those seven, we kind of had talked about as questions that the board had also during our last meeting a month ago.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Mark?
I have, the last item, which was the last question I had, you were asking about sealing the internal drain. If I understand your statement correctly, you're saying that as a stipulation for the special permit, we would, as a condition, I should say.
As a condition.
We would add in language that says that you would provide a tie-in bond certification that all internal drainage had been sealed.
Correct.
Jessica, I want to check with you on overall process as a condition for that, as it's after the fact. Do you see any issues?
Well, the COs are going to be granted through the building department. The planning department doesn't necessarily see any paperwork before a CO is given, so we would be relying on the building department to make sure that they go back and review the conditions of the permit before the CO is actually granted. He gets, he gets copies of the, of all of our decisions, so I can highlight it and just make sure he's aware of it, but as far as I'm aware of it, it's the most we can do.
So keep it as a condition, but it's really...
Yeah, or, I mean, I guess it's not technically a condition of the special permit, but rather a condition for the certificate of occupancy, so they can have their special permit, but they can't have anyone in there until they certify that to the building department.
CO is kind of like the last teeth that the city would have. And you've used COs as a condition, or, you know, tied a condition to a CO in previous permits.
I have no further questions. We resolved everything else.
Anybody else have questions?
No.
Anybody have any comments or questions regarding this application?
I motioned to grant a special permit for 412 Main Street, Yankee Hill Machine, with the condition that they provide a certification from Ty and Bond that all internal drainage be sealed.
Second.
Wait a minute, does it have, does it have to be Ty and Bond? I mean, that seems pretty...
Yeah, Ty and Bond, I think it was.
Specific, but...
Yeah.
Provide a certification that all internal drainage be sealed.
Were you talking about either our office doing it, or Ty and Bond? They should both be working on the remodeling of it.
So...
Please strike Ty and Bond.
Certification that internal...
Drainage.
Drainage...
Be sealed.
Systems are sealed?
Yeah.
Is that adequate?
Or adequate?
Because it might refer to plumbing, and I don't want it to refer plumbing.
The language in here is that all internal floor drains have been disconnected from the site's drainage system.
I like that.
Better.
That all internal floor drains... What does it say?
Have been disconnected.
Been disconnected.
From the site's drainage system.
From the site's drainage system.
Prior to the issuance of a CO?
Prior to issuance of CO. So the other three items that were discussed, the lighting plan, the stormwater systems, the annual cleaning of catch basins, and the internal drainage systems, those were the three items that were brought up. So you feel like that the stormwater systems, annual cleaning, that's been addressed with the O and M plan?
Yep.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah. All right. Okay. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right.
Approved, 5-0.
5-0. Thank you very much. Thank you.
So just, so you understand sort of the next steps. The board has 14 days to draft the decision. I'll try to get, turn it around as quickly as possible, within a week. Once the decision is filed with the city clerk's office, there's a 20-day appeal period. Once the 20-day appeal period is up, then you can get certification from the city clerk that nobody has filed an appeal, and then you're good to go. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. All right. Next up, public hearing for the special permit, 122 Pleasant Street, Hamden Care Facility Inc. Someone here to speak to that?
We're still in meeting, so...
Folks, how are you? How are you? We have a fairly sizable group, I'm not sure what, maybe best logistically where you want to stand there.
Come up to the podium, just be individualy.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, before you start, I just want to give them hard copies of what you sent today by email. So these are the revised site plans, based on the comments from Fire Chief. And we have some revised... And then also... These are copies of the general site plans of the site itself, not internal, but external.
Thank you.
Do you have everything else?
You can begin. Thank you, guys. Thank you for taking the time to meet with us tonight. My name is Steve Riley, I'm an attorney in Springfield, Massachusetts. I represent Hamden Care Facility. Hamden Care Facility is an entity organized under Mass General Laws, Chapter 180, which is a nonprofit organization proposing to operate medical marijuana facilities in the Commonwealth. I'm going to go through the application process and kind of fill you in. I'm not sure how much information you have on the background in terms of what the state process is and where we may be at. What I would like to do is introduce you to some of the team members here. You have what is a pretty voluminous application in front of you. I feel like any question you have is probably contained in there, but we'd like to be able to answer certain questions that you do have, and not take up your entire night by going through that application at length. What I can tell you generally about the members that we have, we have a nonprofit board that is totally independent. There are no employees for the entity that are on the board, which is the way that the state wants to see this set up. There is a nonprofit purpose to the medical marijuana, which is to provide a medical product to benefit patients in need, not to create a for-profit industry. So we have set it up in the way that the Commonwealth wants to see it, which is different than some other groups in how they've approached their application with the state. The group we do have operates seven dispensaries and four cultivation facilities in Oregon and in Colorado. And that's not to say that Hamden Care Facility does, but that's to say that certain management team members that you're going to meet tonight do that. So they can answer some pretty specific questions that you may have about the process and how it'll take place here in Massachusetts. So what I'd first like to do is bring up some of the team members, if you guys can come up and introduce yourselves, and just kind of talk about your role with Hamden Care Facility. These would be some of the people that you may hear from if you have specific questions about how do you grow marijuana, what does wastewater discharge look like, and those kind of things. So I'll let these guys talk for a couple minutes and introduce themselves for now.
I am Patrick Ochleist, I'm involved with the coordination and development of the project.
Hello, my name is Jerry Worsak, head of security for Hamden Care Facility.
I'm Mark Saturka, I'm the CEO of Hamden Care Facility. I own and operated a specialty pharmacy out of Enfield, Connecticut, in West Springfield, Massachusetts, serving specialty infusion medications and controlled substances to patients across the country. I also have an extensive nonprofit background. I started my own nonprofit, the Connecticut Hemophilia Society, and I've also sat on the board of several other nonprofits, including the AIDS Foundation of Western Massachusetts.
Hello, my name is David Bendolo. I currently own and operate seven dispensaries and over 50,000 square feet of cultivation space in Colorado and Oregon. I will be one of the operating officers involved in day-to-day operations with Hamden Care Facility if we're allowed this opportunity. Happy to answer any questions you guys may have. Currently have over 100 employees, have been doing this for a little over six years, so a little bit of experience in this industry with such short routes. And again, happy to answer any questions that you guys have. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Tom Gallard, and I'm a board of directors, and one of my major responsibilities is to make sure that the management team conducts the mission as it's supposed to be done. And I became involved in this because my son is one of the financiers of this project, so I've been involved with it for the past three years since his inception.
Hello, Jerry Worsak, once again, head of security. A little background on me, because I know there's a lot of questions concerning security when it comes to the Department of Public Health, East Hampton itself, the mayor, chief of police, and the fire departments. I sat down a couple occasions with the chief of police, and we're completely on board with anything that East Hampton would like us to do when it comes to the law enforcement side of it. We're going to work in conjunction with them, you know, getting all the ideas per Department of Public Health regulations and rules, and working with the city itself when it comes to fire and police. A little background on me, I was a 20-year employee at Connecticut Department of Corrections. I was a prison guard for 20 years down there. I did some inter-perimeter security in the state of Massachusetts also, for International Protective Services, which is a company I was vested to carry $15,000 worth of money in, in my personal vehicle, a personal weapon type of thing. I've come from an extensive security background when it comes to video cameras, intelligence gathering, and I'm a Wilbournham resident for 53 years. Thank you.
Jessica's helping us out, she's grabbing an easel to be able to put up the plan. So I don't know if you want me to get into detailing the state application process, I don't know if you have questions about that and where we might be in that.
Why don't you give us an overview on the state application process, before you put on with that?
Sure. So the state has effectively a three-stage process. The first, we submitted, I think, in June of this year. The first phase was very basic, it was effectively a two-page application saying, "We would like to apply with the state, and by the way, here's a check." That was probably the most important piece of that first stage. The second stage application was filed in about August. The state has a maximum of three applications that can be applied for, and Hamden Care Facility has filed for three applications with the state. This proposed facility would be both a dispensary and cultivation center, and the cultivation would distribute product to both the dispensary in East Hampton, as well as other two dispensaries that we'll have. We're not sure where those are going to be located yet, we're still in the process of local permitting to try to get those done, so we don't have that, those specific locations yet, but the idea being that this facility would service all operations of Hamden Care Facility. That second application with the state, more significant, a bigger check. At that point, we introduce what is the management team, which are a lot of the members that you see here. There are others that you don't, some of the board members, a couple other of the management team members that weren't able to make it here tonight. So that is the most significant vetting that the state does, and that's that second application, Phase 2, they call it. We successfully completed that phase around the end of the year, and now we've moved on to what is Stage 3, or Phase 3 with the state. And that comes down to the local level and actually citing the properties, referred to as the citing phase. And what we would need to do, and the application is actually less significant than you would think, that second phase is the most substantial, but effective, you've approved our management team to operate this facility, you've approved our finances, our budget, our plan, all of our proposals in terms of how we're going to run the day-to-day operations. Now we want to show you where we're going to actually operate. And what they want to see is that we've complied with local zoning. So in East Hampton, we have a facility that we can operate with a special permit from the planning board. So as part of what the state will do on our application, our Phase 3 citing application, is to come out and verify that we've complied with the East Hampton zoning requirements, and then also review the site and make sure it's consistent with the state... In terms of timing from here, we probably would be something along the lines of ninety days for final state approval upon granting of a special permit. So about three months or so if we were able to obtain one.
How long have you spent getting here?
We filed in the DeVal Patrick first phase of this, so that was, we're close to about four years.
That's a long time.
Yeah, and in terms of operating, actually opening, it's probably looking like 2017, so it's probably gonna be, hold about a five-year process from the day we decided to do this. It's been fairly lengthy, and a lot of ups and downs. Any other questions about the state?
So just to clarify, there's a further step after this where the state reviews, again, once we've conceivably, if the town of East Hampton approves a special permit, they then review that as well?
Correct. So they'll come out and basically say, "Have you done what East Hampton requires for you to operate?" If the answer is yes, then they'll grant provisional licenses, which will be, okay, now go build the facility, but they're gonna be checking in to make sure it's in compliance with security and all the other CMRs that the Department of Public Health has created for these operations.
It's a great deal of oversight.
It's significant, yes. And you'll see that detailed in the operations that we provided to you, and that's, what you have is kind of a piece of what the state has. We've tried to really parse out the most important and relevant parts for this operation in East Hampton. If you don't have any further questions about the process with the state, I'd be happy to talk to you about the facility itself and proposed location.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yep. So the address is one twenty-two Pleasant Street. We're proposing to operate a twenty-seven thousand square foot facility, which would consist of about twenty-four thousand five hundred square feet of cultivation and office space. This facility would hold the executive management team, basically the higher-level operations of the business, whether that be the CEO, general counsel, the chief operating officers, they'll all be housed at this location, so you'll have those people coming through and cycling through. This will be the main point of business, regardless of where the other dispensaries are, because this is where the significant amount of product and effectively money for the operation is going to be, so we want to have the oversight here. The dispensary itself would be limited to twenty-five hundred square feet. The facility takes up what is now, I guess, considered basement space, which would lead to a walkout to the man-hand rail trail and the redevelopment project that's going on at the mills, the Pleasant Street Mills Redevelopment Project. So the hope that we have is that this project can actually further and enhance the redevelopment that you have at the mills, it's a great project. I've been surprised at how much that's progressed in the last few weeks, as we've even gone out to this site. We've sought to involve the city quite a bit in this process, the mayor's office, the planner, Jessica's been great. We've also had the police chief and the fire chief come out to the location to view it, give us input, we've adjusted some of our plans based on what suggestions they may have had. The idea that we have is particularly with security, that there's gonna be a seamless integration between our security and what the city has going on with the police department. With respect to the man-hand rail trail, what we feel we can offer for that is, we're gonna have twenty-four hour security at this facility, we're gonna have lighting that's gonna be on the exterior of the facility that will upgrade what's there now significantly, as well as cameras that are gonna be all around the exterior of the building. So we hope that our operation will not be a security problem, but actually benefit what's going on there, and the idea that that area's gonna be redeveloped and bring in residents and bring in new businesses, and we hope that anybody that we bring will go to Riff's Joint and other places that are over there and spend money in East Hampton. So, you know, we feel that the location's fantastic, the building has a lot of character, it allows us to redevelop a large space in the mills, twenty-seven thousand square feet, and hopefully provide a good benefit to the city of East Hampton. Just to go across a couple other points that I may have missed, we do expect to have quite a few jobs created at this facility, probably thirty-four full-time jobs. Those are gonna be competitive pay, they're not gonna be ten dollar an hour jobs, these are gonna be jobs that have benefits, competitive wages. We anticipate that probably at the peak, there will be about seventeen employees working at any one time. What we've done to kind of lower some of the demands in the parking and back, the public parking for this redevelopment project, is to lease twelve spaces across the street on Pleasant Street, with the idea that those will be occupied by employees, so that customers are able to go in the back and use, and patients are able to use that space in the back. That basement that we have now will be a walkout at grade level with the parking that's back there.
Are you gonna just dedicate a parking just for your patients, customers, or is that gonna be just in the public lot?
Just in the public lot, and my understanding is there's gonna be a significant amount of spaces there, and that they're not going to be able to designate the parking spaces per building. What we've done to kind of alleviate that is also rent some spaces from the landlord across the street. We don't want the patients to be walking across the street, but it's fine for me to walk across the street, and that kind of alleviates some of the parking in back.
So let me just explain to the board, so the way that that public infrastructure project is happening is that each of the mill buildings will have signage that designates parking behind their building for that entire building, but businesses within those buildings will not be able to dedicate specific spaces, because even with the extra spaces being built, it's still gonna be tight back there, and we don't want to have to tie up a certain amount of spaces for a specific business. So that's why they'll be leasing across the street.
You're saying that a dozen will be dedicated across the street, and maybe five will be used for employees in whatever the...
Probably, and that would be a peak demand for employees, it may very well be that we're gonna have ten, twelve, fourteen at any one time. We expect thirty-four for the facility to be dedicated there. You know, in terms of what will cycle in and out through the day, I think a maximum of seventeen, realistically, it's probably gonna be more like twelve on an average day. So we hope that that won't put any kind of additional burden on the public parking that's in back. With respect to the zoning, we have worked with Jessica, the city planner, to determine that this is within the zone that's been created for medical marijuana, she's been excellent to work with on this matter. And with the granting of a special permit, we would be able to operate the facility. We did go through in our application and address all the zoning issues that you have in your zoning ordinance, there's quite a few actually, with respect to both the special permit and then the additional medical marijuana requirements. I just want to highlight for you that on page sixty-three, we did begin to address proposed findings of fact for a special permit with respect to the medical marijuana requirements. And we can answer any specific questions that you may have at this time, and as I said, I don't want to take up, we'd probably be here all night addressing point by point on the zoning, but any questions that you have, feel free to ask them, hopefully we can answer, if we don't, we'd like to come back and provide an answer.
Maybe we need to kind of cover just some, so that people know, and we have a record, things like trash removal and...
Sure.
With how the security works, like, can we go over some kind of step-by-step summary stuff?
Yeah.
Is in there, we have Reddit, but I want to make sure that everyone here knows what your intentions.
Sure. So why don't I have David Benolow come up and talk about things like trash removal, the actual growing of product, what those operations will look like, and then we can have Jerry talk about some security matters, and then if you have any questions about the build-out, Pat is probably the best to answer those questions. So I'll defer to these guys, and I'll jump in if I can help out, and I'll take it.
As far as the waste removal goes, there's a couple steps that we'll take to make sure it's secure. First of all, all waste will be weighed in, in coordination with the state's mandated seed-to-sale tracking, so they know where all waste is. So we'll weigh that waste in, it will then be ground, so it's unidentifiable and unrecognizable, it'll be mixed fifty-fifty, fifty percent with solid non-consumable waste to render it useless. It will then be thrown into a lock dumpster that is in a security fenced-off area with the, I guess, the tennis court privacy fencing, so you can't see into that area. Again, that dumpster will be locked, it will be accessed, picked up by the waste company, and they'll be escorted into that area by an employee. So it's quite a process to throw out some garbage, but definitely make sure that it's secured and rendered useless.
About water, water usage and wastewater.
Yeah, so right now, we are running a grow with identical regulations in Colorado, a cultivation facility, with the, you know, in Massachusetts, it's mandated that it's grown USDA-certified organic, although it won't be certified by the USDA, it'll be grown under those guidelines. So I have a sample of that water right now at a lab in Colorado to get the VOD readings on it. I believe, from some different scientists and the lab that I've spoken with, that that will be well under the limit and will be able to be discharged as gray water, but I don't have the actual sample results back yet. But again, I do believe that it will be able to be discharged as gray water. As far as water usage, it's not quite as water-intensive as a lot of people think. We'll probably be using about two thousand gallons per day at this site if we're granted the permit.
I'd love to hear about fire prevention and the possibility, and what would be your risk management strategy for the potential fire?
Yeah, so the building is sprinkler, we have a pretty extensive emergency response plan that all employees are trained on. There's fire extinguishers, we actually, we met with the fire department and are, you know, taking some additional steps per some recommendations on, you know, on that end. But it's not a really high likelihood of a fire, there's electricity, and it's gonna be, you know, electrical, a lot of electrical there, and that's really where the risk would be, but it'd be brand-new electrical, all put in by a licensed electrician, you know, engineered by an electrical engineer, and obviously inspected by the city, so I don't see a huge risk there.
You said you've been communicating with the fire chief, I assume you saw the comments that he had, that he submitted regarding potential areas of concern, upgrading testing and current sprinkler piping heads, it should cover insulated windows, whether possible HVAC system that could be used in reverse to help ventilate.
So...
Yeah, and we had spoken to him on that about doing a reverse flow on the HVAC system to exhaust the, you know, the air out, and all the, the entire sprinkler system, you know, I think some of the pipes would have to be extended out and obviously retrofitted to meet our new design as well, so we would be working with the sprinkler contractor to do all that.
Okay.
So just to clarify, those comments came from Captain Wayne Heneman, and the fire chief also submitted an additional letter which you received today?
Yes.
Okay, alright, just wanna make sure it was clear. And the chief had no issues?
Shall we do some security?
Hello, Jerry Worsick, once again. Security's gonna be paramount, okay? When it comes to the security of the building and the safety of the staff and the public, twenty years in a maximum-security prison, I've been through a lot when it comes to inner perimeter and outer perimeter security, and when it comes to protection of the public, that's what we did down in Connecticut, right? I mean, we want no one out of the place, and this point now, with this project we're taking on now, we don't want no one in, and we want nothing going out, okay? We're, I'm a little over the top, maximum security, twenty years, I got a partner here, Patrick Wilcox, he, twenty years maximum-security experience with me, sometimes they think I'm over the top, and I'm kind of asking for a little bit more, and this and that, and the other thing. I want it top-notch. We can't pay people ten dollars an hour, we want to pay staff, as Steve had mentioned, pay some good wage, you get some good people, we can't hire no slugs to do the type of job that we're expected, that they're expected of here in East Hampton, to protect the safety of the staff, the public, make sure none of that product is out of that place. Some of the things you'll see, do they have, do they have little maps on them?
Yeah, yeah.
You'll see a couple of terms, mantrap, what a mantrap is, double-door system, the front door part, you'll see mantrap, you'll see a front entrance down the very bottom, you'll see entrance to dispensary, you will see an access control, there'll be a security staff member in there, has an outside visual of the outside through the window, someone will come up to the front window, will know they're legit, will let them in, they'll check their ID that they were given by the DPH, they will go through the mantrap area, get through second door, go into the waiting area, and then the next part of the process will be until they get inside to where they actually get their product. You'll see that mantrap term, it's a double-door system, so no one can just bust in one door, run inside type of thing, it's double-door system, that's high-security type things we want to put in store here.
How are those doors made?
What do we end up agreeing on with those doors?
It's, they're heavy-duty, you know, commercial-grade doors, yeah.
Not a wooden-type door, a high-grade steel-type door, I forget how many gauge it actually was.
And just to clarify, the mantraps work where, after you enter the first door, that second door doesn't open up until that first door closes and locks behind you, and then your credentials are checked in that middle room again, and then the second room is opened.
In lock system, correct.
You go into the waiting room where your credentials are checked from the waiting room to get into the dispensary area, and then your credentials are checked again at the counter when you're checking out with your medicine.
And before you're allowed in a mantrap, there'll be a camera with a bullhorn on the outside, so you'll have to show your credentials before you even buzzed into the mantrap, which at that point, you know, there'll be a security guard at that station, you know, to check the credentials.
Like an intercom system.
Yeah.
Security guard is when you get in, is that where you're first?
That'd be the first, but there'd be a camera outside the door, so you couldn't even walk in without, without your card, yeah, you wouldn't even be allowed in without a...
And there will be, there will be security as well, you know, monitoring the premises to make sure there's no lawyer or anything else going on.
As Steve had mentioned also...
Hold on, sorry, sir. I noticed I hear there's somebody about a bullhorn going off, if somebody tries to break in or something, how long is that gonna be? Is that gonna be like, you know, real super loud, like a...
It's not exceptionally loud.
It's more of a buzzer, I guess, you know, that intercom system.
It's a buzzer, a speaker-type intercom system.
But it wouldn't bother the neighbor voters or something like that, right?
No, it's not gonna be heard, probably from me, you would probably be the first to be heard. It's like an intercom speaker system type thing.
Best way is to instruct anyone outside the building, if you have somebody kind of loitering around outside the building, you can kind of call them to their attention pretty quickly with a bullhorn, and hopefully they're gonna move along, so that's the purpose.
As Steve had mentioned, there's been a lot of upgrading going on in the back here when it comes to the trail, some new light standards being put in, we're gonna upgrade some lights back there ourselves to make sure the building's well lit up on the outside, we'll have cameras on the outside also, so we have good visual around the whole perimeter of the existing part of the building. When it comes to the garage in the back, you see a garage area, a secure loading area, it'll be an overhead door system, heavy-gauge steel, roll-up type door, vehicles pull inside, door gets secured, and then we do our loading from inside the facility itself. Alright, I was with the chief, we did a thorough, thorough walkthrough with the chief. He was, he's on board with really doing it the way it should be done, and he, you know, of course, security's paramount with him also. That was one of the things, he was like ecstatic over that we have an inside garage-type system rather than, and another thing about the outside, all those outer windows, I'm sure you're all familiar with the mills, what it looks like over there, all those windows are secured, they're gonna be, not cage, I shouldn't use that word.
Corrugated steel.
It's a corrugated steel on the outside, and the inside will be aesthetically pleasing looking, the inside, Jim had mentioned that he's gonna take care of that corrugated steel outside, it's gonna look, you know, first-class, it'll look nice, there'll be no product to be seen from the outside, all the windows will be buttoned up and secured, no one will see nothing from the outside in. Doorways, we're trying to limit our doorways and entryways and exitways, we will obviously go to code when it comes to the exits and for fire procedures and emergency procedures. Someone had mentioned a fact about the fire and security, we will have, when it comes to the security staff, of a fire and security tours and trips throughout every shift, of twenty-four-hour shifts. What that is, what that entail, that'll check for humidity gauges that may be around, for temperatures, sprinkler systems, any type of fire, smoke, that type of thing, all that will be covered during the rounds and trips of the security officer, and they will have, it'll be all documented, they'll have a checklist of what they're supposed to go through, what they're looking for, anything out of the ordinary when it comes to a fire part of it.
Jesse?
Anything else, Steve, on that?
One more question here, sir.
Are you guys gonna be wearing uniforms, or just work clothes, or...
We will be, the polo-type shirts, is that what it was?
Yeah, they will be marked.
All the employees at this place, are we wearing some kind of identification, so they'll know who they are?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
I believe it's a light blue shirt, is it? Yes. I think it's a light blue shirt with a dark blue patches, there's HCF across it.
I would think, I'm certainly no expert, but I would think one of the major concerns would be, or risks would be from the employees themselves. How do you vet your employees?
Besides all the video monitoring cameras we have on outside, we have several on inside.
I'm Corey-certified, everyone that we're gonna have is gonna be checked. The state, security's the biggest issue that the state has, the CMRs are very specific with respect to the procedures that they're gonna require, so as part of the state coming out here to vet what we've put together, they're gonna ensure that we're in compliance with everything. So a lot of those questions that you have in terms of who's going to be there, there's no greater concern than we have for that, product diversion, anything like that, there's gonna be no tolerance for any of it, and the systems that we're gonna have... And the systems that we're gonna have set up, the seed to sale system, is gonna be able to track everything that goes on in that facility and every piece of product in that facility.
Who do you have taking the applications in? Do you have a special group, or is it you and two or three other people? Cause I know you're gonna have a lot of people, if you're gonna have 20 or 30 jobs coming through, you're gonna have a lot of people applying for these jobs. How are they gonna be same way coming in and out?
The executive management team is gonna control who is employed at the facility. Somebody like myself will run the Corey checks, and that'll be part of the application process. The board of directors will control the executive management team, so there will be those two different levels of, of the, of the business.
Chuck, are you, are you just, I just, to clarify, are you asking in regards to access of the employees within the facility itself?
Well, I'm not asking about, because they're coming in as a new business, if I wanted to come in and apply for the, a job with your concern, are you gonna have a special entrance for applicants so that you don't have a bunch of people just boring in on you?
The start of the process will be all online applications to start, and then at that point, we, we invite people in for the interview process, and we'd have that in a separate secure area in the facility. You know, we'd have designated interview times, that way.
Do you think it's possible to hire local people in this thing?
That's part of the idea, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And we're all from Western Mass, Mark, did you grow up in East Hampton?
Yeah, growing in East Hampton.
Yeah, Mark, from East Hampton. But we're all from Western Massachusetts, so we're not guys coming in from Chicago or Boston or New York that are coming here and saying, "We would just wanna throw this facility in." We wanna work with the police chief, he's been fantastic. I can't tell you what a refreshing thing it is to work with him, because you have so many chiefs that just don't have any interest in this. And he was more than willing to meet with us on multiple occasions, to go to the facility, to walk the facility, and make suggestions, say, "Hey guys, can you change this?" For example, the, the secure garage that, that we touched on a little bit, that, that was really a suggestion of the police chief to say, originally we had had a fenced area, and he really pushed for the garage, and, and that's something we, we wanna hear, and we're willing to take those kinda suggestions. So, you know, we feel we, like we've had a good relationship with him so far, and the fire chief as well, we, we wanna continue that as this process goes on and we build the facility.
This might be a good seg if you'll allow, but one of the questions I had was, can you describe to me your selection process for East Hampton?
That's a good question, so. We had looked everywhere essentially and said, "What is the best fit for us?" Now, the hardest thing that we had was to find a building that made sense. These are fairly large operations, we looked at other sites, Chicopee was a location that we had looked at. We love the mill site, the ability to redevelop, be part of that redevelopment, and the character that that building has lends itself to an operation like this. One of the things I didn't talk about was what is this gonna look like? Sometimes that's a question people, "Well, what's this gonna look like when you walk in?" The best comparison I can have is to say an Apple Store, that's what we want the dispensary to look like. So we wanna provide a first-class facility there that the residents are gonna be proud of, and that hopefully will employ residents, and hopefully will improve part of the redevelopment of the mills.
And when it comes to the hiring of security staff, law enforcement, corrections, military, that's where we're starting, that's part of our goal is for that. We wanna start at the top and hopefully, like I said, we got a list of people, I would say I got a list of probably 50 to 75 people of law enforcement, corrections, and military backgrounds on that 75 list already, which they all are, whether they're all male or female.
And, and you know, while we're talking about security, I think it's worthwhile to note, it was briefly mentioned, that everything is tracked seed to sale. So there's cameras on every square inch where there can ever be product on the inside of the facility. There's also cameras on the outside of the facility, those cameras will be, not only will the facility be monitored by live security, but those cameras on the exterior and key cameras on the interior will be monitored by an exterior, by, by an external security monitoring company. So if someone's, you know, walking up to the building and, you know, trying to push open the door at midnight, not only will we have live security there, but there will also be that two-way bullhorn that can be accessed remotely, and someone can say, you know, "You with the sport coat on, you're trespassing." So instead of an alarm going off, and, and a lot of times those are false alarms, you know, someone would be able to call directly to the police station and say, "I've got eyes on a gentleman in a sport coat with a red tie, you know, trying to break into door number three." So that's, that's definitely one of the security features. Another is, again, that seed to sale tracking where it's, it's very tightly regulated, it's very tightly controlled, that inventory. So we'll know if there's any grams that have gone missing from the facility, it will be on camera, and we'll be able to see exactly what happened.
Can you explain that seed to sale just a little more, like how, how you're actually tracking everything that's in the building?
Is it a genetic marker, what is?
Yeah, so as soon as, as soon as there's a plant, so it started from a seed, it's assigned a number, and it's a radio frequency ID tag. So there's an actual tag that follows that plant all the way through harvest. Once that plant is harvested, that, that tag stays with it. You know, that plant would, let's say it's a 2,000 gram plant, that would, depending on the strain, turn into something about 200 grams of dry cannabis. And, and then that tag would follow that dry cannabis until that full 200 grams from that plant was sold to patients. So you can really track it from when that seed started to grow, until that, you know, 200 grams or whatever that number is, is sold to a patient. And that's for both making sure there's no, you know, for, for securing the product as well as quality.
And can you explain the growing process as well? It's on the first floor, right, or the basement, I guess, or?
Yeah, so the, if you walk in from the front of the building, it's on the first floor. On the back of the building, there's a basement level, that's the walkout basement. So it's on the first floor. I don't know how detailed you want me to get, but there's, there's four phases to, to the growing process. It's, it's basically a four-month process from when you start until it's ready to be on the shelf.
And so what's the oversight during the grow process as far as employees and security and monitoring all that? I understand it's all video coverage, but what's that process entail on a day-to-day basis?
Yeah, so there's, there's an inventory done on the plants, so if there's 1,000 plants in that facility, you know, it's checked to make sure there's 1,000 plants, you know, plus whatever is planted, less what's harvested. So there's inventory control process. Now, there's, there's only, I believe, there's one employee exit, and there's a person manning that exit at all times. Employees will all come in through a locker room where they'll change, they'll change into scrubs which have no pockets, and they'll be checked on their way out of the facility.
Can you tell me a little bit about the odor control? At what distance will I detect that near your facility?
If you're within, inside the facility, you will detect it. But outside the facility, we're using a three-tiered approach to make sure that it is not detectable from outside the facility. We'll be using commercial-grade carbon filters, filtration system, ionizers, and, and so we'll, you know, make sure that there is no odor detected outside of the facility.
None?
None.
I had a few points I just wanted to follow up on a little bit. So I compared the, the look of the dispensary to an Apple Store. I think the most apt comparison to the security is probably a casino. If you can imagine cameras everywhere, people watching those cameras, finding out what's going on, as Dave just described, the process of having to have everyone change before they go in the facility, put on scrubs. Those type of controls, seed to sale, all those things, it, it's more akin to a casino than, than probably anything else. I did wanna touch upon the, the secure loading, that was an important point for the chief. Our, our goal is to never have any product or cash leave this facility in an unsecure way. So, the idea that we would have is that an armored truck would pull in, they would take product to other dispensaries, they may take cash out, but at no time would that be visible to the public. Basically, they pull in, garage door closes, and it's locked inside the facility. So I just kinda wanted to highlight that. And I know that that was an important piece for the chief, and we're finding that that's an important piece when we go to municipalities and speak with them as well, because there's a concern that you have people walking out with cash into a parking lot, or product into a parking lot. So we, we've done our best to try to alleviate that and address the issue and take the suggestion that the chief had. With respect to water, there had been some questions posed by the DPW, we did provide some responses to that, I don't know, we, that we have follow-up comments from them?
No, I spoke with them this afternoon, and I believe he was, the department head for DPW was checking with his water and sewer guys, so he, I had not heard back by the end of the day. So, I think the only, he was only looking for information for the first question about the BOD loadings. I think he didn't have any other issues with the, the water usage or the size of the service, he thought the service was fine. So it was really just that first thing about the BOD loadings, which he said you've, you're getting tested right now anyway, so.
Great. One thing we didn't touch on are signs. I, I think there's a perception that these are gonna be neon signs with marijuana plants on them, pot leaves and things like that. Good comparison would be what Neta is doing in, in Northampton. It's a very clean sign, it can't say marijuana on it anywhere, it can't have a marijuana leaf on it anywhere, it's gotta be a certain size, tastefully done. The CMRs by the state regulate those signs, so we're gonna have to be in compliance. That's just another piece of what the state is gonna verify when they come out here. And then we also have the local requirements with signs as well. So we'll be both in compliance with what East Hampton has and what the state has developed with the CMRs.
Getting back to the loading, I'm just trying to orient where that garage door is on the building, that's on the upper level, right?
No, that's on the lower level. That would be that little space where that goes through between the buildings, a little alleyway thing?
Yep, okay. And so, is that garage area secure from the restroom? Conceivably that door goes up, somebody could slip in there.
Same thing also would be.
But that's all sealed off?
Yeah, interlock system, this other door wouldn't be open until the other door was shut.
Okay.
Same type of system as we have throughout for any outer doors.
Describe it as another man trap system, where there's one way, you can't get through both doors.
Just a vehicle trap.
Yeah.
I don't know if you wanna touch on traffic, cause we talked about that, trip generations?
I, I think we put it, put it, you know, in the proposal, but we didn't see any, you know, really major impact on traffic. It's hard to, you know, compare it to other studies, but I think we put a comparison in there to pharmacies, and we really didn't see a huge traffic impact at all.
Essentially a retail operation with, with reasonable volume?
Deliveries, big trucks?
No, that, that'll be very minimal. The, the only deliveries are going to be what are going from this facility to the other dispensaries. We would never anticipate that that would be more than once a day. And we had talked to Jim about trying to, who's the owner of the property, about trying to do that at times, it's not gonna disrupt any other tenants or anyone else over there. So that may be at 6 o'clock in the morning when no one else is there. We're not sure what those times are gonna look like, but we're willing to do things like that so it doesn't disrupt anybody else.
It would be an unmarked vehicle, minimum product inside of it, in a lock vault, nothing seen from the outside.
What about other deliveries? I mean, you know, scrubs, office supplies, whatever else you have to have there?
Yeah, the uniforms would be something, I, I think that, do you outsource the uniforms?
Yeah, so, you know, we're, we're looking at a delivery schedule of every other week, so a truck coming in every other week to drop off supplies.
And how would that delivery be handled? Does that use the sort of secure loading area, or does that just get walked in the front door, or?
No, we're gonna try to use that vehicle trap, vehicle, overhead garage type area, lines of vehicles, you know, can fit in there. I don't know what depth we got on here, we got, what, 25, 25 feet deep, is that what it says?
We, we would schedule it to use that, we would wanna take advantage of that security, even though it's not something that is really a sensitive product, it's the easiest way to get into the facility. And as you mentioned, when the door goes up, we don't want somebody else to come in behind it. So that, that trap that will be there will prevent that kinda thing from going on.
And so, you're, you're getting your trap, your trap estimates based on comparing it to a pharmacy, is that correct?
Yes, I believe so, yeah, I believe that's what we got the estimates, yeah.
It might be less than that, though. It might be less than the pharmacy, because we're just selling basically a fairly narrow range of products, where a pharmacy or as a drugstore would have a lot more products for sale than when we do it, but we, that was the nearest comparison we really had. And that traffic would be really spread over the, the period of the day, we call it the early morning period, it would be sort of 50 times in the latter part of the day, less the traffic.
I don't know the number, was that an estimate?
It was, it was in the, it's in the application, I'm just trying to find it.
Yeah, can we try?
Per day, yeah, I don't have it.
100 a day, I think is.
I believe it was only per day, yeah.
In the first year.
I think it's page 17.
And probably, it's, it's a little hard to tell, that, that was kind of a number that we wrestled with a little bit, because it's not a biz, of, of, an industry that's really up and running in the Commonwealth yet, so it's, it's hard to say what is that gonna look like. And to compare it to Colorado is really unfair, because the volume of dispensaries that they have there is very different than what we're gonna have. So I mean, we could do that, but we would be really deflating the numbers for you. So, we felt that pharmacy was probably the most accurate thing to look at.
And so, but there isn't a traffic study that you guys have performed, correct?
No, we don't have a formal traffic study.
Okay.
I'll do the question.
How long does the average transaction take? Like five minutes, 10 minutes, any idea?
This is Dave's question.
In the beginning, as, as patients are getting educated and, and, you know, learning the different effects and benefits.
You're relying on the same people coming down here all the time, then? So you're like a, you know, the same people, right?
Yeah, so, so I think in the beginning, it will take a little longer if people are getting educated, maybe a 20-minute transaction, and it can go down to about five minutes once people know what they're looking for and they're stopping in just to grab it.
What are sort of the options to somebody who comes in there?
You know, the options are flour, so, you know, typical marijuana that you see on TV and, you know, and, and so there's concentrates, edibles. Edibles, there, there can be tinctures, so like a liquid that you put sublingual under your tongue. As far as edible goes, you can have, you know, capsules, any type of baked good, so a lot of, a lot of options.
And is all that gonna be done onsite?
All of that will be done onsite in a commercial-grade kitchen.
I have a question. Going through this, the one idea that, well, it doesn't really bother me, but I know that you have listed home delivery. How are you gonna specify home delivery when you actually, how is that person who probably needs a home delivery, how are you gonna vet that person that they actually have? I know they need identification, cards or whatever, and prescriptions.
That's part of the state requirement currently, the state is not doing that, we're not sure what, what their plan will be on that. We are talking to them about potentially, you know, being able to pick up that person and bring them to the facility rather than deliver it, we prefer not to deliver it, and we think the state is open to that, where we could actually go and pick up a person with a hardship, is unable to get to the facility, we could actually go just pick them up and bring them to, to our location, rather than deliver it.
A severe case, you will probably.
In a severe case, we, we will deliver, once the state decides what, what, you know, they're, they're going to do about that.
Is this also going to be a place where somebody who's a caregiver for somebody who has a medical marijuana use card will be able to pick up for their client, or no?
It's only, you know, if you, if you have a valid, you know, card from the state, will you be able to purchase it, yeah.
How about if somebody is, is with someone who's got the card? Is that a scenario where they're let through the man trap, or is it just the actual person with the card?
No, they've gotta be registered with the state.
We've tried to hopefully get into Neta, did you see what the effort, we can't get through the door. No.
You're also gonna have handicap accessibility, wheelchairs, things like that, people who can't just get up and walk through that man trap, you're gonna have.
Of course, of course, yeah, it's gonna be fully accessible, yeah, it's gonna be grade level the entrance. And bathrooms will be handicap accessible as well.
That's, okay.
So I assume if there's also this commercial-grade kitchen, that because you've got all the protections in place to keep the marijuana odors and everything out, that there won't be anything coming from sort of baking or anything like that, that that will also similarly be screened and taken care of?
Yes, correct.
I've kind of listened to every piece that we've said, and we've covered just about everything in 1211, 1212 under the special permit criteria.
Yeah, you have two sections, basically, that you need to go through, is 12-9 for the special permit, and then 10-9 for medical marijuana.
I'm going to list them. Physical requirements, all right, we'll start with use. So, I guess I'm just going to cover some of these here to make sure. I'm going to start with the physical requirements versus all aspects and use of the facility relative to the acquisition. Cultivation, possession, processing, sales, distribution, dispensing, or administration of marijuana products containing marijuana, related supplies or education material. Fixed location with a fully enclosed building and shall not be visible from the exterior of the business. You've covered that. No, OMMD facility shall have a gross floor area in excess of 2,500 square feet. I think if I remember right, you said 27,000 and 2,500 of that was sort of administrative offices, did I understand?
2,500 for the dispensary and the remaining space for cultivation and offices. So we've limited it based on the zoning ordinance to 2,500 for the dispensary.
Got it. And it talks about ventilation. All RMD and OMMD facilities should be ventilated in such a manner that A, no pesticides, insecticides, or other chemicals or products used in the cultivation or processing are dispersed to the outside atmosphere. And B, no odor from marijuana or its processing can be detected by any person with an unimpaired and otherwise normal sense of smell at the exterior of the medical marijuana business or any adjoining use of property. I believe you covered both of those issues. Then we have our signage issue here, which talks about signage to be displayed on the exterior of the RMD or OMMD facility entrance in plain sight of clients stating that registration card issued by the, excuse me, Mass. Department of Public Health required in text two inches in height. That's very specific. I'm assuming you'll add that to the signage as appropriate, that everyone understands what I just said. In location part two, an RMD or OMMD facility should not be located in buildings that contain any pharmacy, medical doctor office, or the offices of any other professional practitioner authorized to prescribe the use of the medical marijuana. It talks about an exception, but you're not having a doctor in the building prescribing?
No, sir.
No? Jim will do, thanks. An RMD or OMMD facility shall not be located within a building containing residential units except mixed-use buildings, including transient housing or group housing such as hotels, motels, lodgings and dormitories. And I think you covered that. We can go on here, we have a whole other page of these. I'll just try to pick the highlights to make sure that we're in compliance, which I think is important. As far as reporting requirements are concerned, all special permits and site plan approval holders for an RMD or OMMD facility should provide the police department, fire department, building inspector, and the permit granting authority with the names, phone numbers, and email addresses of all management, staff, and key holders, including a minimum of two operators or managers of the facility identified as contact persons to whom one can provide notice if there are operational problems associated with the establishment. All such contact information should be updated as needed to keep it current and accurate. Have we received, yeah, Graham? Skipping to part three here, again, just picking some highlights for people so they know we did this. Permitted RMD or OMMD facility shall file an annual report to the permit granting authority no later than January 31st, providing a copy of all current applicable state, excuse me, applicable state licenses for the facility and/or its owners and demonstrate continued compliance with the conditions of the permit. Annual report comes out, is that?
Yes.
The owner or manager is required to respond by phone or email within 24 hours of contact by a city official concerning their RMD or OMMD at the phone number or email address provided to the city as the contact for the business. And I think we only have just a couple more here. With regard to issuance, transfer, discontinuance of use, special permit site plan approval shall have a term limited to the duration of the applicant's ownership control of the premises. As an RMD or OMMD, it shall lapse A, if the permit holder ceases operation, B, if the permit holder's registration by DPW expires, or C, the permit holder shall notify the building inspector and permit granting authority in writing within 48 hours of such a lapse. So there's a lot of conditions in which if everything isn't, all the ducks aren't in a row, this stops. All right, I'm going to skip ahead to findings. You okay with this? Do you need the other stuff?
So this is, this is actually, this is the part that will make the decision. All those other things are more of the standards that they've addressed, but the board really needs to make findings on the next six bullets, so that's what's, that's what's important, yeah.
And then we could take some public comment too.
You got it.
Yes.
All right, the important findings. In addition to the standard findings for a special permit or site plan approval, the special permit granting authority must also find the following. One, the RMD or OMMD facility is designed to minimize any adverse visual or economic impacts on the abutters and other parties in interest. My take is they've covered that. Do you want to ask the audience if there's anyone regarding the abutters or?
Well, let's, let's just open it up to public comment now and see.
Right.
Are there people here who have any comments or questions about the application? State your name for the record, sir.
Sir. Sorry. Salem Derby, Vice President of the East Hampton City Council, Chair of the Ordinance Subcommittee that was responsible for revising the medical marijuana zoning ordinance that came through to East Hampton when the law changed. And I would say that we couldn't ask for, you know, a better proposal is from my perspective, this is exactly what we envisioned, was looking at rehabbing some of the old mills and meeting all the expectations that we laid out in the ordinance. It seems like, from what I've heard so far and what I know of the ordinance, seems like it is in line. You know, I would say, that being said, I would like to know what the current tax valuation of that property is, and if it is nonprofit, is that taking off the rolls?
No.
Okay, so that's good to know. And, and then also, and this by no means would be, you know, a requirement that I don't think anybody could place, but I would say something that would be beneficial for the community would be to, with such a large roof, to look at renewable energy as part of the operation since it is going to be such a energy-intensive operation. And I think, you know, so I would just put that out there. But, you know, as far as being the Chair of the Ordinance Subcommittee that approved this, this, this was exactly what we were looking for. So, I guess I would be in favor of this. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Joe McCoy, Levin Clap Street, President of the City Council, so represented tonight. I would like first kind of thank this group. I was one of the people invited to the preliminary groups and, you know, the police chief, please, chief police, chief of police, fireman, chief of, oh boy, fire chief, the public health inspector, the whole group was there. So they did an outstanding job of making sure all, everyone's concerns were voiced and have constantly been in contact with all those important players to make sure everything is being well done. And so I was really impressed with how out front they were, and so I was impressed with that. I do question, I would like to have for maybe the gentleman from Colorado. It does seem in Massachusetts, we're on the forefront of probably becoming a recreational type of marijuana sales as well. Has the infrastructure and the security been thought of for, forefront as far as, so that that facility would still be relevant if this became recreational use of marijuana in the future? I mean, obviously you can't speak to Massachusetts laws, because they haven't happened yet. But if this was Colorado, would this facility fit those same requirements?
Yeah, I think the security is, you know, in line with any use. It's a very, very secure facility. You know, I know as of right now, it's a plant that's on the medical side and we really haven't thought that. There's a lot that would need to happen and could happen and it would obviously be another matter if that's something they wanted to hear. But as far as the physical building and security, it could.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Mayor Karen Kager. And I would just like to say that with, when Attorney Riley first contacted us, he wanted to meet with our community and he also wanted to meet with any, you know, any department that he thought would, you know, have questions or want to be involved. So one of the meetings that we put together was myself, our City Council President, our Chief of Police, our Board of Health, our City Planner, our City Attorney. So in, in other words, anyone we thought that might have any specific questions designed on this. And, but even before the meeting happened, I think our community has been extremely proactive having this ordinance in place, as Councilor Derby was saying. And this, this particular mill industrial site, I believe, is what they had in mind. And, you know, instead of, you know, with different communities waiting till something comes your way. So all our regulations, restrictions are in place. And it's very, it's also evident that the state's regulations are much stiffer. So when anything like this comes our way, the very first thing that, you know, are my concerns along with the community are for, you know, the, the health, safety, and the security of our community. And they have addressed each and every one of them. And our police and we, at one of the visits, as you know, we had the fire chief. We also had our police chief and our captain, who as you know, was very much involved with drug enforcement. So they, I thought, were extremely open to suggestions. And coming from our police, they're looking at it from a different set of eyes, from the security end. And I'm really very happy with the information that's been provided. They have notified of butters, also offered a meet and greet, which was attended. And again, any information that anybody, and one of the things that I did ask, Councilor Derby, was as soon as we heard the word nonprofit. They are a nonprofit, but it is a very different type, so they, they wouldn't be the owners of the building. Obviously, the owner, Jim, would still be responsible for real estate taxes, which he is and has been. But they are also responsible for personal property tax. So it's not tax exempt. And they also have different, I'm not quite sure if they're regulated by the state, but they also do charitable organizations to the community. So I've seen nothing but compliance and, and a lot of things that just seem to fit into exactly what we've been looking for.
Anybody else have anything to add or questions to ask?
Kevin Quinn, my wife and I own a building next door across the street on Pleasant Street. We were at the open house. I think we were both impressed with the way they've thought this out. The security issues, I've got six employees in the building parked in the same place where the facility's employees will be parking. And we just feel very comfortable with it. I think they've really thought it out. Love to see the space developed in the way it is, far better than having tractor-trailer trucks backing up and back and forth between that, that area was always a problem with the Sullivan operation there. So I love everything they're doing with it. I love the way it's set up. I see very little street impact with the primary entrance on the, on the mill, the bike path area. It's a needed service, so I'm all for it.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, so we take a look at those.
So that would seem that number one is in compliance. That was an actual butter cabinet we just heard from, so. Everyone agree with that? Yeah? So number two, in findings, that the RMD or OMMD facility demonstrates that it will meet all the permitting requirements of all applicable agencies, it's been a long day, within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and will be in compliance with all applicable state laws and regulations. We covered that, yeah? Part three, that the applicant has satisfied all the conditions and requirements of this section and other applicable sections of this bylaw ordinance. With the exceptions of four, five, and six we're about to hit, they've hit everything so far.
Yeah.
And four, that the RMD or OMMD project meets a demonstrated need. That's interesting.
Well, there's some, there's information in here, maybe you guys can speak to that about the state determination about the population that they'll be served by us?
Yes. So what we anticipate, sorry, I'll come back.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Right now, there's a high demand in Western Massachusetts. You have Neta servicing as the only operating business in Western Mass. At this point, we're only aware of one other company that may open in all of Western Massachusetts. And I should include Franklin, so four, between the four western counties. So the intention of the state when they did this was to have a minimum of one per county. And with those numbers, you would effectively have about four right now. And, you know, that, we have some numbers that we provided here too, they're on page 64, with respect to how many patients we would anticipate getting. This facility was a draw for us. I mentioned the mill as being a benefit and the building and the character that it has there. But this also has the ability to service both Hamden and Hampshire County, and the proximity to 91 is also a great benefit. So we feel like there is a high demand in the area and that this location will be a perfect spot to draw from both Hamden and Hampshire County. Also, we think, you know, could have a little bit of this way from Northampton as well, so.
And just for people who haven't had the opportunity to read through the whole application, that the Mass. Department of Public Health has estimated that 2% of the population would benefit from medical marijuana. So that sort of gives you a rough estimate of the numbers they're looking at for a need in the community, I guess.
Yeah, that would be 13,000 just in Hampshire County. And we, as we mentioned, we anticipate that Hamden County would be a draw here as well.
I think that satisfies the requirement, yes? Number five, that the RMD or OMMD facility provides adequate security measures to ensure that no individual participant will pose a direct threat to the health or safety of other individuals and that the storage and/or location of cultivation is adequately secured. We had several questions, I feel confident of the conversation.
They've done a good job detailing their security policy.
Yeah, they did a great job, yeah.
And lastly, number six, that the RMD or OMMD facility adequately addresses issues of traffic demand, circulation flow, parking and queuing, particularly at peak periods at the facility, and its impact on neighboring uses. Talking about parking and comfortable.
Yeah.
I mean, the mill really makes this easy.
Jessica, is the planning department have any questions, comments, concerns?
No. One thought that could be put out there that, just from the traffic and the queuing is wondering if there could be like a five-minute spaces and it's something we can talk about under the mills project, but I'm wondering if a business like this would, would benefit from having a short-term parking area so people who literally are just running in and running out would have spaces sort of near the building. But I think that's a bigger discussion.
Yeah.
But just a thought that I had in terms of the queuing aspect of it, that may, that may help the applicant, it seems. And other businesses in there as well possibly, I don't know.
The other thing I noticed there too is you have, when you're, I guess we can call them patients, when they come in, have them sign an agreement as to marijuana use, such as driving or whatever. Is that in, that's going to be, that'll be in place before they are issued any type of marijuana, whether it be liquid or?
Yeah, before they're, before they're given any cannabis or cannabis-infused products, they will sign an agreement stating that they will not give it to anyone else, they will not operate motor vehicle, they will not use it onsite there.
Right, so just to clarify, no one's using any product onsite, that's right.
That's, that's a state requirement.
Right, right.
That's one of those things where if there's enough invested in this project that we would never risk that for somebody in their car.
And there's a zero tolerance policy with that agreement as well, so if they violate that, they'll immediately, you know, be taken out of, out of our queue, they won't be allowed there. They'll also be reported to, you know, the police station and the state DPAs, where they could also revoke that from.
I like that idea.
The state could take their cards so that they can go nowhere else.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment, if I may.
Yeah?
I'm about to make a motion, I don't know what's going to happen with it, to approve this special permit. And I'm a, I'm a volunteer citizen here in East Hampton on this board as the Vice Chair. This was a particularly meaty chunk of information to go through. It was not, it was not easy to collate at all. However, I'd like to say that I felt after reviewing it, that this was really well put together. It made it so much easier than it could have been. And I'd really like to thank too the mayor and the City Council for putting this together and making this possible in East Hampton. I really felt that you positioned us, you did a really good thing in positioning us to be able to handle this kind of service. That's my comment.
Anybody else from the public comment or question?
I motion to approve the special permit for 122 Pleasant Street Hamden Care Facility.
I'll second that.
No conditions, right?
No conditions.
No, I think they're on everything listed.
Can we have a second?
Yep.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, all right.
Welcome to East Hampton.
So you get the same lecture that the other applicant gets. So now I have two decisions to draft, so 14 days at the very latest and then you'll have a 20-day appeal period after that.
Oh, yeah.
So I'll do it as quick as I can.
We still have more stuff to do.
You're welcome. You're very lucky.
Jesse Benchura, remember the restaurant?
That's not an insult.
Good to see you smile, you're sitting there with your broken face right there.
No, I flew up here from work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your questions were really good.
I'll take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Jim, sorry, I did not mean to call you sir.
Jim, sorry, I did not mean to call you, sir. Hi, David. I believe my contributions are there at the time. We talked to our facility, so we know how it all works, what's going on, what you can expect, and please feel free to reach out to me at any time.
You're going to be on the internet anyways, right?
Which is real.
On the internet, you're going to have your?
Folks, we got some more stuff to take care of, so we can finish the conversation.
No, if it hasn't, we'll.
All right.
I know.
So, come on, let's, let's finish.
Let's finish this. I wanted to make a motion.
Next up is the sign ordinance.
Okay, so.
Folks.
Folks, we still.
Excuse me, we still have a hearing going on. If you could take it out in the hall, it'd be great.
We're still meeting? Thank you. So I sent you, did I write it in the technical memo?
Yes.
All right, so as you know, the Supreme Court of the United States last year had a case before them that basically really impacts sign ordinances across the country. Essentially, what it did is it prohibits content-based regulations, so you, you really shouldn't be, you know, regulating based on what the content of that sign is, which is essentially what our signage ordinance does. It regulates, you know, real estate directional signage.
Free speech, is that the issue?
Yeah, connected to free speech. So, so.
We have some work to do.
We have some work to do. So sort of the background is, last year, I think, we had talked about the sign ordinance and, and recognized that there's a lot of inconsistencies in it.
Yeah.
And so I had done a markup of the inconsistencies. We decided as a board to send it to city council. They hadn't done anything with it. So, so I reached out to them and I said, you know, "Look, this decision has come down from the Supreme Court. We need to, we really need to focus on our sign ordinance, so kick it back to the planning board, let us work on it, and then we'll take it through the process that it needs to go through." So I haven't prepared anything because I thought it's, we had such a meaty agenda for tonight, but I just want to put it on your radar screen that this is what we're going to be working on probably for the next couple months. I suspect, given the interest of the sign ordinance, the last time it went around, that there's going to be extreme interest in the sign ordinance this time, but I think it's really important that we get ourselves in line with the rulings from the Supreme Court, and it, it needs an overhaul anyway, so this is a good reason to do it. There is a training, there's not a lot of, I've been trying to Google, and Jesse, maybe there's stuff that you can find through the, the law community, but there's not a lot of guidance right now to the planning community on how to be looking at our sign ordinance in relation to this, to this.
I'll tell you this, I mean, this case helps a little bit, the Reed case, but sign laws in general, and I deal with it at work for other communities, it's a nightmare, and it's constantly a question of whether you want to push the envelope or not because there's no clear guidance. And they basically, when they whack a town for their sign ordinance at the Supreme Court level, you kind of are left wondering, well, they, they don't say, and here's our model sign ordinance. They just say the specific thing is endowed.
Right, go figure it out.
Could you tell me what whack-a-town means?
It's like whack-a-mole.
It's like whack-a-mole.
Isn't that bad?
It's bad, it's bad.
Does that mean we'll be working with the ordinance committee?
We will. And so I've, I mean, I've been, I've been chatting with Salem and Joe, and so they're aware that this is going to be happening. But there is a training, I can't go to it because I need to be at a meeting. It's in Boston. I'm going to see if, what we're trying to do is get information remotely, either we can remotely access the meeting or whether we can just get the information, in other words, because nobody has time to drive to Boston for an hour and a half meeting on this.
When is that?
Tuesday, March 29th, and it's actually through the AG's office. So the AG's office is sponsoring a seminar on regulating signs, Tuesday, March 29th, at 2:00 to 3:30 at the Stalton Stall Building, 100 Cambridge Street, Boston. It'll be led by attorneys from our office, Copeland and Page, and the Massachusetts American Civil Liberties Union. So you, maybe you could go for, you know, for work anyway.
I might actually have to be in Boston that week anyway, so.
Okay. I'll give you this email. It would be great if somebody could go to this because, you know, I just think, there's just not a lot of resources right now giving anybody guidance. Jamie did sit in on a webinar that was put on through APA, the American Planning Association. So I do have that PowerPoint, and we do have that webinar that I'll go through at some point, but there's not a lot of guidance. So we're kind of a little bit of our, on our own, and so we really need to sort of, but we need to figure this out. So this is going to be, you know, when we got nothing else going on for permits, this is going to be the thing that we really need to, like, buckle down for an hour and, and work on and see if we can figure it out. And I'll try to do as much as I can internally to just give you drafts and, and just have you comment, but we really need to take a good, hard look at this and, and get the sign ordinance just enough.
Can I ask, I, I'm in complete agreement, although I, I have a memory of the process of the original sign ordinance, how contentious that was. The sense I'm getting from you, and maybe my own desires, is that less is more for, for any kind of change? Is, is that kind of what you guys are thinking?
I don't know what I'm thinking yet. I, I really don't know. I mean, there's, there's.
It's not necessarily less is more. The thing is, you can't, you can't regulate based on content, so it has to be content-neutral. So that means that you're either letting, well, you're either letting signs go up that you otherwise wouldn't want to, or you're prohibiting signs that you otherwise would, but what you want to is based on the individual, so that's kind of the whole argument about it anyway.
How do you define it?
So you're going to, I mean, it's going to be a, it's definitely going to be something that we're going to really need the public input on what the town wants for signs. I mean, you're not.
We'll also need the input from local merchants.
Well, yeah, and so once we kick off this project, you know, I'll notify the EDIC, who's our Economic Development Committee. You know, council is already aware, so I can definitely put stuff out on our Facebook page when we decide to start having this discussion, but I think we need to have a draft first to be working off of.
Yeah.
And I mean, what I can do is I can just dust off what I had sent council, which is just dealing with inconsistencies, and there were, I mean, there were so many inconsistencies in that ordinance.
But, I mean, you're dusting off the fixes you are making to the ordinance, but the ordinance has to be.
It's a kind of a combination of the two. I mean, I don't want to have, I don't want to throw out the whole thing, there's got to be something we could salvage, or.
I don't know, I think we might just want to start from scratch.
Do you think, I mean, I could use that guidance now? That would be helpful for me to know now as I'm moving forward. Would it be better just to start a, something fresh and new?
I almost think that we look at it as we're drafting a model sign ordinance. I mean, most of our stuff was either content-specific or self-contradictory.
Right.
So, I mean, if you're going to check 90%.
Or hard to interpret.
And revising that stuff always ends up more complicated than it would be to start from scratch.
Right, I agree.
I mean, I think also.
I agree with that.
Harry's got something to say.
Harry's had something to say for an hour. Yes, Harry. Is this a question about Yankee Hill? Go.
The biggest thing about the sign thing, because I was on a, I was on a committee with the, with the planning board, and we met with the, with the ordinance committee.
I think Chuck was part of that deal, right?
Yeah, some stuff that was grandfathered in. So in order where somebody had a sign up there, it'd be grandfathered, but then somebody else would come along with a sign, they'd have to comply. So this whole thing just got so screwed up. And I, my biggest thing was, how can you enforce this thing? Because somebody driving down the street can see a sign up there, but they know it was a grandfather, wasn't a grandfather or whatever.
But what do you do with that, with everything with zoning, right? I mean, like, you look at the side yards and half the town, houses in town, it's not up to zoning bylaws.
To me, it should be, it should, everybody should start from ground one and then make everything, everything sane.
Yeah, but you're going to run into all sorts of issues by telling somebody who signs one up for 50 years that they.
Yeah, well, that's the whole thing.
That's the problem.
That's the problem.
So, so some of them, they become, they become pre-existing non-conforming, and then when that business goes out.
Right.
You know, and this, and the building changes hands, and it's not a business anymore, then the sign's got to come down.
That's what you hope for.
I think we have more time.
Fortunately, of all people.
No, it's not going to be for two weeks.
That's okay.
And we're going to, that's what I mean. I mean, I think we're talking about, I think we should take the time to put together a decent model sign ordinance and then.
This might take a year.
Yeah.